Good afternoon, welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, March 25th, 2025. It is 2:04 PM. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. I'm Commissioner and Vice Chair Wayne Fornier on Zoom. To my right, Commissioner Carolina Mejia. To my left, Commissioners Rachel Grant and Emily Klaus. County Manager Leonard Hernandez is here. And we're starting off with Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Commissioner Grant.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if Commissioner Mejia would proceed with her land acknowledgement?
Yes, we would also like to start today with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squaxon Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people, our sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing.
Thank you, Commissioner Mejia. And we have an agenda that has one alteration, which is just an indication that the 3:30 public hearing is not going to go forward. The board voted to cancel that hearing. And so that's the only change to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second?
Motion has been made in second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So then we'll move to item two, which is public comment. Board of County Commissioners welcomes comment from the public. There are some guidelines governing such comment to ensure they are appropriate. And the general speaking guidelines are as follows. Introduce yourself, including the area of the county in which you reside when you are called. Address the board, not audience or staff. Please silence your cell phones. The board does not respond directly to public comment, but may on an as-needed basis respond to specific or county manager may respond to specific items with follow-up, either today or at a later meeting. Speakers are limited to a total of four minutes to address the board. Board reserves right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for good cause. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, disfamatory, or discriminatory in nature. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind. No comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business. No remarks about pending land use permits or other quasi-judicial matters that could come before the board on appeal. And finally, all materials provided to the county may be considered public records, subject to release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, RCW 4256. So with those advisements and your cooperation, we will begin with the written folks. And then if you're online, we'll call you at that point. Shelley Dilworth is up first, and Michelle Blanchard is on deck.
Good afternoon. Hello again, Ty and Carolina, who I have reached out to before. And let me introduce myself to the rest of you. My name is Shelley Dilworth, and we own property off of 101st and Delphi. This property was a rock quarry originally, and then was transformed into an unmanned fire station. We purchased our property in 2017 as commercial industrial property. It was sold to us by the county real estate agent. Sorry, I lost my train of thought there. And we purchased it to commute to continue to operate our tree service. We verified ahead of time that there were no wetlands and no gophers, so that we didn't have to go through the lengthy process. Immediately, as we began to take a tree length to a structure down, we were flagged and told to halt all work. The compliance officer who led that initial harassment slammed his hand down at me on the counter to try and prove a point, and was later let go for inappropriate actions, due in part to my complaint and others. Now, here we are, ourself, now we are, here we are back in front of you, eight years later, dealing with the exact same issues with your departments, and that is just not okay. It is not okay that we purchased our property through the correct process with the county real estate agent, only to know that the commission, that the commercial industrial property was purchased, we purchased as being deemed as residential by the county with no due process to us. It is not okay that because of this determination, we will lose money on our property when selling it, going from commercial industrial to residential. And it is certainly not okay that he, that we have paid taxes for eight years on our property as commercial industrial and that without being able to utilize our property as commercial industrial property. I have worked with Josh, Brett, Sandy, Arthur, Greg, and others within the planning and compliance departments, myself, to better understand what exactly it is that is needed on my property, only to jump through one hoop after another and end up at the same place again, eight years later, when the exact same letter was sent out for the exact same things. For what I have come to understand in talking with others in the community, there's a shelf that so, that is so to speak of, that I, that planning and the compliance division have that hold these files for future reference. Who's maintaining those files? Who's updating those files? So that this isn't happening to me and other residents throughout this community. I plan to attend many of the future meetings as possible to continue to bring the concerns that I and others of this county have to your attention. So there's no way that you can deny me a second time that you are aware of these issues. I call on you to like, look at your staff, look at yourselves, and make the necessary changes within your staff to make these things go away, to stop this from happening to your constituents, who should be your most priority. Thank you for your time today, I appreciate it.
Michelle Blanchard with Dennis Plank on deck.
Good afternoon, my name is Michelle Blanchard, and I live in Little Rock, Washington. I lived, I moved here about 40 years ago. And at that time, I'm here, first of all, I'm here to ask for fireworks ban for the county. When I moved here 40 years ago, I learned that summer started on the 5th of July, and that you were always going to have rain on the 4th of July. And at that time, it was fine, but things have changed. Now, the rains stop in April, and by Memorial Day, the grass is up to our, it's tinder-dry, just like the forests. Last year, Pierce County, King County, and the cities of Olympia, Lacey, and Tom Water all imposed fireworks bans. Thurston County only did not, or excuse me, Thurston County did not have an unincorporated county fireworks ban. This is not right. The county commissioners asked for input, for comments, about fireworks ban from the people here in this county. Fifty-six people testified either by email or here in person, asking for fireworks ban, and their reasons were many. One was the sound, the noise, the noise. Fireworks, people start blowing off fireworks two or three days before fire, before 4th of July, and they, they keep blowing them off afterwards. The littering that happens, they blow up. And these, these fireworks are not like when we were kids, little poppers. These things are aerial bombs, they're firebombs. They litter, they drop, they don't care. People shooting them off don't care where they land. People's pets vanish. My neighbors have to sedate their dogs because they just can't handle it. People like me, I'm a Gulf War veteran, and I have PTSD. And I can tell you, when those things go off, I have a hard time dealing with it. Finally, the thing that concerns us most is the possibility of fire. I live in Little Rock, we have prairie habitat. We've had two fires out there in the last five years, and they go fast. When this, this, when these comments were solicited, 56 of us, and we are all people living in unincorporated Look Thurston County, all said, "We want a fireworks ban." Two people, two young men, said, "We, we like fireworks, they're fun." And Thurston County's commissioners went, they dismissed the 56 people with valid reasons for no fireworks in, in favor of the two young men who like to have fun. This is unacceptable. How much does it cost the county to have extra fire, fireworks, whatever, extra fire departments on hold, or excuse me, on standby for the many fires that are started by fireworks? How much does it cost the county to have extra cops ready to enforce a law that says no fireworks? How much does it cost the county to have cleanup crews and picking up this stuff in litters? It costs them a lot. How much would a fireworks ban cost you? The entire county, end to end and top to bottom, no fireworks law. How much will it cost the county? Okay, a couple of extra cops, who are already out there busting these people. I do ask, please, consider an all-county-wide fireworks ban. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dennis Plank with John Pettit on deck.
Hi, my name's Dennis Plank, and I'm married to the previous speaker, so we're talking on the same subject. She's a biologist, so she's got the emotional stuff. I've got, I'm an engineer, so I did some research, and our wonderful University of Washington, which I did not go to, has a state climate office, and they, you can, you can actually do some wonderful research there. The nearest place I could find was Chehalis, but, or Centrilia, I'm sorry. I keep confusing the two. But they've got data going back to roughly 1890, 1892, on precipitation and temperature. And I looked up June, and the total change since 1890 in precipitation for that month has, it has decreased by roughly 25%. The temperature, average temperature in June is increased by 2.73 degrees Fahrenheit. That's pretty much a recipe for lots more fires. As my wife said, the parade arrives out earlier and earlier every year. And we've had, the last two years, there have been red flag warnings out for the Black Hills and the foothills of the Cascades. One on the 4th and 5th of July, and one on the 9th and the 10th, I believe it was. So that's, that period is getting an awful lot drier. So I am definitely in favor of a fireworks ban. That's it, thank you.
Can I ask, the, it sounded like you were referring to a public hearing with the 56 people, the two people?
I believe the president came off of, part of it was, it was commentary, and a lot of it came off of the Joe website.
Okay, okay.
Personally, in the library, discussing that various things they did.
Thank you. Okay.
I even went to the Little Rock Fire Department, she begged for fireworks ban, and she said, "It's out of my hands."
Just making sure I understood what you're referring to, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, John Pettit is up. And then we'll call for anybody else who didn't get a chance to sign up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is John Pettit, I live on Rich Road. And yes, I'm one of those that are really active. I want, I want you to hear my voice, and I actually prefer the, the old formula of at least one meeting per week for the public to have an opportunity to speak to their representatives. I don't care if you're doing any other business, just a meeting that would have the opportunity for a public to show up and convey their concerns to you. Instead of having to be reactive all the time to circumstance or calling of an issue, that you get to be proactive and say, "I want to know about your issues." Now, I happen to have seen somebody which I have great admiration for, Ms. Dilworth here, who, who I've been involved with oversight on some of her different projects, and she's been, she and her husband have been active, or I should say, her husband's even been active as a position as an arborist to help resolve issues before with CPED about allegations of trees being removed that weren't removed. Which brings me to a particular topic about, there appears to be a, well, I can verify that there is a process within the current setup of the organization that stems from the previous top level of having a position of a biologist within the CPED department, which is actually completely contrary to Title 24, which is the critical area ordinance of which we're supposed to be following. Why should anybody out here follow anything to do with the critical area ordinance if the county's not going to follow it and the processes that are required? The fact is, is I did a little further research on this topic about extra environmental process created, for instance, from this biologist. And you know, Thurston County isn't that big of a county, but you know, we can compare to other counties and see how we rate. You take a county like Kitsap County, which is virtually identical in size, lots of waterfront and everything else. They only seem to average about four, what they call RUEs, reasonable use exceptions, per year. Thurston County over the last four years has been averaging 17 to 18 per year. Each one of those costs the people that are having to be pushed through it, not only the additional $5,000-plus to even go through the process, but another $3,000 to $6,000 for extra studies and reports that should never have been required. I'm encouraging you to think about starting to listen to the property owners, starting to follow the code, so that that way, the county doesn't get a lot of liability. If you want to start having your own expert involved, provide free wetland studies. Let the county pay for all of it. But don't have people go out there and spend thousands and thousands of dollars, and then have somebody inside the department tell them they have to rewrite their reports the way she wants them. It's, it's basically completely anti-process. Extremely expensive, and the county gets to make a profit on it. You charge for this extra process $231 an hour for CPED employees. An employee costs about $60 an hour, so it's profit to you. I have to close, but I would encourage, we have a good sit-down meeting, perhaps even an extension for a community meeting, calling people in that are frustrated. Let them get to your, get to you to hear it. Start having regular meetings in terms of regular meetings, even if it's nothing for more than just listening to the public. It's the only way you're going to get to know what's going on. Thank you.
Are there other folks in the boardroom that would like to provide public comment? Come on up.
Good afternoon, my name's Carrie Martin, I live in Olympia, and I'm here to thank the commissioners for your support of libraries and National Library Week. We're very excited to have you read the proclamation. I'm the regional manager for Olympia, for Timberland Regional Library, and we are terribly excited to be providing library service in Thurston County. Timberland Regional Libraries worked hard over the last couple of years to increase service to not only our established brick and mortar buildings, but also to unincorporated Thurston County through our Anywhere Library Service. And we're, the library is really popular, and we see lots and lots of folks every day. So I want to invite you to come and visit us anytime, and thank you again for your support.
Your proclamation is on our consent agenda, but we do have the proclamation I'd like to provide for you. If you could come on up both. Yeah, thank you. All right. Anybody else like to provide public comment? There's nobody online, so we will move on to the consent. Oh, sorry, county managers update, I think the report chair. Okay. And next up is consent agenda, we have items 3A through 3J. Sorry, 4A through 4J. Is there any request to remove an item from consent? Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Motion has been made in second to approve consent items 4A through J. Non-debatable motion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Apartment item 5A, Public Health and Social Services. Amendment number one to the Washington State Department of Health, 2025 to 2027 Consolidated Contract.
Hello, Dr. Jim Freihite, Director of Public Health and Social Services. I am here to ask for approval of Amendment One to the Washington State Department of Health Consolidated Contract, providing a maximum consideration of $5,329,160 for the duration of January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2027. This base contract was approved by the board on January 7, 2025, and it, this First Amendment adds statements of work to seven various grants and activities within the consolidated contracts.
Questions on this?
No.
Okay, very good, is there a motion?
I move to approve Amendment One to the Washington State Department of Health Consolidated Contract, CLH 32070, providing a maximum consideration of $5,329,160 for the duration of January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2027, and authorize the director or designee of Public Health and Social Services to sign the amendment.
Second?
Motion in second to approve Amendment Number One to the Consolidated Contract. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner reports, Commissioner Klaus?
Thank you, Chair. I had, as far as external board meetings since last week, I do have a couple of updates on the Regional Housing Council. Our March meeting was canceled, and we will be meeting again in April. The timeline between the March meeting and April meeting, it was so short, and there weren't very many agenda items to cover, so we decided to push that one until April. Our staff have been working really hard on a few key communications updates, one of them being the new quarterly newsletter I'm really excited about. And I want to give props to Alisa and the rest of our staff and our housing team for all the creative work that went into the newsletter, and I'm looking forward to that being released next week. We also are making progress on planning our annual retreat. We've been meeting with the facilitator and consulting with our RHC members and advisory board members to ensure that everyone's needs are taken into consideration when planning for that retreat, and I'm really looking forward to that as well. As far as, that's all for Regional Housing Council. And then we also had a Law and Justice Council meeting that went really well. We're talking about what could a data culture looks like, and we missed your comments, Commissioner Grant, because I know you're, you're a data wizard, and you always have really good input during those conversations. But we're continuing down that road and really looking forward to getting some key staff positions filled, so we can keep moving forward with the strategic plan that the Law and Justice Council follows. I also had the opportunity to tour with Commissioner Grant's EA, the Veterans Hub in Lacey. And I am really, really proud of that facility, and I regret not touring it sooner. As a veteran myself, I actually saw resources from the Veterans Hub a lot of years ago, probably like 2016 or so. And it has changed so much since then, it's a completely new facility. I almost didn't even know if I was standing in the same building, that's, and I'm not kidding. Like, that's how much it's changed. And I just wanted to really strongly encourage my fellow commissioners to tour that facility if you haven't already, or even if you have. They're constantly updating and making it better and providing more robust services. It was really nice to see some of the partner organizations that were present the day I toured, who are providing resources as far as housing, healthcare, employment, and really truly making a difference in the lives of our veteran community members. So that's just one really inspiring and eye-opening example of key partnerships between municipalities that is really saving lives here in Thurston County. I also attended the TVW Gala. That was my first time attending, and if any of my other commissioners have attended the TVW Gala, you know that it's quite the event. I had a lot of fun and appreciate the invite from WASAC to sit at their table with them. And I also worked with the Board of Health staff to finalize a letter to the legislate, legislators on expanded healthcare access for immigrant community members. And I wanted to thank Commissioner Mejia and Dr. Harvey, who both serve as, Dr. Harvey, our Chair, and Commissioner Mejia, our Vice Chair on the Board of Health, for getting feedback to me quickly on that, so we could sign it and send it off this morning, prior to the budget hearings this afternoon in about an hour. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Grant.
Yeah, so I was fairly busy last week preparing for the Yelm Town Hall. I'll talk a little bit about that, that's why I wasn't able to attend Law and Justice, and that the mayor of Yelm, Joe DiPinto, and myself, Matt Marshall, and Marilyn Strickland all gathered together in Yelm, and it was an amazing community turnout. There was really great, the girl scouts were there, and they were very excited, and there was quite a few media outlets in attendance, and the tone was really collaborative and positive throughout all of the evening, and it was just really, it's some, some good questions. I had some good questions, and then really have the ability to stay after and, and talk with constituents, and have some follow-up things that people will be hearing from me on. On Friday, I attended the Nisqually, well, I didn't, I, I had to do it virtually, but Nisqually River Council. I was really excited to hear about some of the Student Green Congress that they, that they put on each year, and I just wanted to mention that it's and I just wanted to mention that it's really cool. It's at Evergreen State College. They bring about 450 students, and I believe Wayne's daughter was there too. I saw a post about it. Um, 450 students to the college campus, and all throughout the year, they, these students are collecting water samples, and then they have the opportunity to come present their data, and it's just incredible. So I was excited to, I just thought that, um, we should have a shout-out to all the people who work so hard um, in that group to, to bring those things together. Um, I also toured county facilities with the coroner, um, yesterday, so that was really fun. I got to see, um, you know, things within the coroner's office, which, um, and, and learn a little bit more about what the coroner, um, and their amazing staff are doing on a daily basis for the people of Thurston County. Uh, and then, lastly, I was able to testify today on a bill, uh, which we hope will move forward, House Bill 1813, which will allow for, um, our counties to be able to procure um, more funding for crisis care services. And, um, that is what I've done since last week.
Thank you. Commissioner, uh, Mejia.
Uh, thank you. Um, so in terms of community events and, uh, meetings that I've attended, I've attended community conversations on world languages, uh, uh, held by the North Thurston Public School District. Um, I also attended, um, the intercity transit meeting, uh, and there's a report that I sent out via email. I'll see meeting, I will be doing a more thorough report, uh, tomorrow. Um, been participating in the Take Your Child to Work Day, uh, meetings, um, and also, um, attended, uh, the Night on the Town Chamber event. Uh, we've been, the summit planning, uh, for, uh, that's being held by the league and other community members is, is well on its way. Um, I think we have a date pinpointed for May. Um, but more information on that to come. And, um, other than that, I've just been having several meetings with, uh, different community members, had a meeting with Local Progress, um, as well as Darren Goss, who's, uh, the CEO for Providence, and, um, yeah, busy week.
Thank you, Commissioner Mejia. Commissioner Fornier? No report. Very good. Uh, I had a busy week. I had, let's see. Had, um, a chance to go to Billy Frank Junior Day at Timberline High School. That was super awesome. Lots of student art, um, and different community presentations. Um, the Green Congress that Commissioner Grant mentioned, Commissioner Fornier, I, Commissioner Fornier and I were both there to watch his daughter present the data.
Oh, I didn't know it, yeah.
Um, he invited me, so thank you. It was, uh, I live right down the street, so I had watched my kids do that. Uh, so I was really, it's really exciting to see the kids get excited about their environmental, um, you know, research.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's cool. And then, um, State Building Code Council met, uh, made a, had a really long just presentation and discussion about site versus source energy, which is a fascinating topic of how you measure efficiency, um, whether at the site of a building versus the entire, taking into all the things that go into creating the energy source. Um, so after a kind of a protracted debate, we, um, stuck with kind of the way things are, have been dealt with. Um, it may be addressed again in the future, but at this juncture, we stuck with a site, uh, oriented approach to, uh, efficiency standards, because that's embedded in the law in other places and, um, has some advantages in terms of consistency and specificity. Um, plus, Washington's working hard towards a complete greening of the, of the grid, so that was a factor as well. In other places, it might not make as much sense. Anyway, that was interesting discussion. Ribbon cutting on Saturday at the Watson's Greenhouse in West Olympia, the old Barkin Garden Center. If you haven't seen it, it's pretty spiffy, pretty nice, and it was a huge turnout for that. Um, then the Prosperity Grange held a 95th, uh, anniversary birthday party out on Steamboat Island. I was able to stop by early. There weren't a lot of people there yet, but they are getting ready to go, so hopefully that was a good event. And lastly, I wanted to mention West Olympia Business Association Meeting on Thursday. Um, the, the mayor of Olympia and the city manager presented on the state of the city. That was a really interesting presentation. Some of the things that I learned, um, that I thought might be of interest are that the Grass Lake Park that's there on the west side, uh, is getting close to opening. It's going to have parking and an extension of trails, and it seems like it's going to be a really good community resource. They hope to have that open in late May or by June at the latest, so look for that. And the Hands-on Children's Museum expansion, the financial plan is moving forward and close to completion, so that project is moving forward and looks like it's, it's going to be moving pretty quickly, uh, once we get to that, um, financing, you know, getting all those ducks in a row. So that was exciting news. Um, so I'll stop with that.
Can I just, uh, interject? I forgot to mention one thing that, um, that I attended. I, uh, I didn't know until probably an hour before, but I officially was, uh, appointed, uh, as, uh, on behalf of WASAC, uh, to the statewide 911 Advisory Committee. And so I did attend that virtually. Um, it was in person, and it was hard to hear virtually. Um, and, uh, and so I didn't feel like I got a ton out of, um, out of it, but I just wanted to let all of you all know that, um, I am now, um, working closely with that group and, and plan to be engaging with the 911 Advisory Committee.
So this is not 988?
Nope, this is 911, 911. Yep, but, yep, that, but there's, you know, whenever the 918, 988 Advisory Committee comes along, I'll jump on that. Yeah.
I saw there was that we have a debrief on that. It just came through.
Oh, yeah.
Update on the transition plan.
Yep.
It's been going for a while.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody. Uh, we will not have a board meeting next week, just for everybody's, uh, that's kind of what today's meeting was about, getting an advantage of that. Next board meeting is on April 15th at 2:00 PM. But you can always contact, contact your commissioners in any variety of ways. Um, standing here at the podium may seem like the, uh, a very old-school, traditional way, but you can, uh, reach us through any number of means, so don't think that your public, you know, input or opportunities are limited to just, uh, formal board meetings, so. With that, we adjourn.